I will let's go.
For everyone knowing, I'll just tell you, it's next time.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our now regular meeting for May. Wait. So, well, actually, let's let's announce first from closed session and then we can finish with that and then open up the regular session. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Out of closed session, liability claim number FR 102887 was denied by the City Council. No other reportable action.
Thank you. So with that, we end closed session. And now we start with the regular meeting for May 6, 2025 at 7:38. Can we can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready? Begin.
Can we all please stand for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please? Thank you. Maybe see it. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda? Just one thing. What I would like to have counsel consider real quick is to move everything in regards to announcements and reports after a regular action item, items. If that's okay with you. I mean, we're going to be here anyways, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd ask for one exception to that. Can we allow Mr. Pacheco to do his announcements and reports and move the rest after? Because I don't want him to wait, have to wait till the end of the meeting if he's got anything to.
No, Mr. Pacheco gets paid by the month. He can stay.
Sure. I mean, I'm okay with that. No problem.
And then everything else move, yeah?
So is there a is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the change to the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Mayor Potem. Second by Councilmember Paul. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. So next, we have citizen comments. This section of the agenda allow.
Can I do roll call?
Yes, go ahead.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth, absent. Councilmember Upal.
Present.
Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Roth is absent.
Thank you. Citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the City Council this evening. Is there any citizen comments? Anyone on the phone? Here and now, coming back into a chamber, any citizen comments in the chamber? Please stay forward.
Hello. Mayor Moran and members of the council. My name is Russ Winton. I've lived here all my life, which is good. I'm here to let you know that music in Memorial Park is up for a six year. Can I pass something out right now?
Sure, yes.
This is the sixth year we've been doing this music in the park. And I can tell you how it started. I was down in Paso Robles, being a wine job judge for for the Midstate Fair. And my wife and I stayed an extra day down in Paso. And on Thursday night, all the all the people were out at the town square putting down blankets and bringing lawn lawn chairs. And it was just jumping downtown. The music was incredible. And I came back and said, you know, we could do something like this. We could put live music in our grandstand that was sitting idle because the Fourth of July had moved out to a different location. So I went to see the director, Jackie. She said, Well, we don't have any money. And I said, I don't have any money either. So we just went on went on a whim. I found people that could play, mostly kids from Livingston, but a good, good, good turnout in the first year and saw the enthusiasm and the the community feel of getting out. And so the next year, we got some sponsors and we took off, only to be shut down the next two years with COVID. So this should be our eighth year, but it's our sixth. I really want to point out that we have really some good sponsors here. The Rotary Club folded, but Brandon Friesen was president at the time. He donated the money to our, our, our project. And so we, I think this is the last year we're going to carry them over. But the other one, the other, the other sponsors are really good people. And I want you to know that Vias Mexican Cafe is second year donating money to make this happen. Wenton Ireland's Trauma and Green. My grandfather started that business in nineteen fifty eight, nineteen fifteen, fifteen. And AV Thomas Produce, which is the largest growers, packers, and shippers in the whole country now. And they contribute to our cause. And finally, the Community Health Health Services of America are really strong. We've, we've had a great run, and we're going to have a good lineup this this year. Unfortunately, Los Quinos could not join us this year. They had a death in the family. And we're, I'm supply, putting, putting the Sound Remedy Merced in their place, which is the day after Memorial Day. That's what they could always come back and play for that. But most, almost all the groups here have some Livingston musicians graduated from the high school. Right now, we have two really good band directors, one at the middle school and one at the high school. And you can see the first night, Livingston Marchik Band will be, will be performing. They have sixty six kids in their band. I've never, I've here all my life, it's never been that good, that bad, or that whatever. But it's huge. And it's just because we got dedicated people there. You know, I think a community needs something like this. It pulls the community together. You have a good community when you combine arts, culture, and community. It works every time. And thank God, I went to that Thursday night episode in Paso Robles and seeing what could happen. And we're drawing two to three hundred people a night now. And that's great. And I wish you'd support it. I know I've seen some of you there. And what else are you going to do on a Monday night? That's boring. Get out there and listen to good music. Any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
With your food trucks, Mr. Winton, have you notified the Wolf Den of what trucks are going to be there? I don't want someone like, you've had tri-tipperary there before, so I don't want the Wolf Den making tri-tip. They should be having something different that night. So he's not, the two aren't competing across the street from each other.
I can answer that. Tri-tip is only one year.
Okay.
It only came one year. And the lady that has the food truck has been there for all six years.
Okay.
And she's good. And I, she's committed to this. And I've told, I've told Jackie and other people, don't compete with her, because Wolf, the Wolf Den was open then too, but they were just doing burgers.
Right.
And I just put in a request this year, I want a hot dog. So someone's going to make a hot dog there. Got to have a hot dog.
Have not convinced them, and I haven't convinced them to not do just cheeseburgers. Some people don't like cheese.
That's right. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks for taking my time, because I need to sign in here, right?
Well, Mr. Ross, Mr. Winton, thank you very much. And I, we all appreciate the effort to put all this together. It's not, it's not something that could be done just overnight. It takes a long time, and it just takes a lot of work to get it done.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear you say that. But I'm kind of selfish. I just love live music. I love live music. There's nothing better than live music. And I might even do some dances this year. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments in the chamber? If not, we're closing citizen comments at seven forty seven. So next, announcements and reports from Mr. Supervisor Jim Pacheco.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me today. Just a couple things. Two weeks ago, I attended the CSAC Convention, which is the California State Association of Counties in Sacramento and the Latino Caucus. And one of the biggest issues that's going on with some counties and cities, of course, up and down the state, first of all, is immigration, having to deal with that, some of the issues that are going with that, and our federal budget. So a lot of discussion there, again, between all fifty eight counties and some of the cities that are coming up and down the state. I, on Monday, I attended a plaque rededication ceremony. The courthouse in Merced is turning one hundred and fifty years old. They're doing some renovations. They're going to have a rededication of the whole building in October. But they rededicated the plaque on the anniversary. It was May fifth, Cinco de Mayo, that a hundred and fifty years ago that that building was dedicated, and our first board of supervisors and our county officers were in that building. And I appreciate that you have the moment assigned for our first responders here in Livingston. Just a reminder that May is Peace Officer Memorial Month. So we have our thin blue flag line. There will also be a Peace Officer Memorial Ceremony at the, it'll be right next to the county building on May fourteenth. I believe it starts at nine AM if anybody wants to attend that. I'll be attending the One Voice Conference in next week for, going to Washington with myself and some other representatives from the cities. I think Mr. Roth is going with us. So we'll be going down there and advocating for, we have three strike teams. One is public safety, one is infrastructure, I believe, one is water. So we're going down to advocate for, not probably for the county, but for the city to get some, be able to get some recognition from our federal partners to help, help our local jurisdictions here. And, and lastly, I just wanted to recognize, so today we had our board meeting, and we recognized our District One Volunteer of the Year. It was Esperanza Polito from Livingston. She was, does a lot of good things here in the community. She's not only donates her time and helps get donations for clothing and furniture for people in need, she's also on our local radio station here. So it was very honoring to be able to honor her as our District One Volunteer of the Year. So, and that's all I have. Does anybody have anything for me?
Counsel, any questions, comments?
Just one thing.
Sure.
And, you know, and, and when you mentioned the, this event on May fourteen, nine AM, and I think that is something that has always, I heard in the past about contemplating the ideas, the idea of moving some of this, or considering some of those county or events to later in the evening, because, you know, I mean, it's good, it's good that it's in the morning. But it's the same people attending all the time, you know. And sometimes, most of the time, people in the community are, that's when they're working. And even though they might really want to be there and participate and be part of those many other events, you know, having some of those in the evening.
Okay.
You know, it's just, it's just opens, opens it up for the possibility of more, the average community member being able to attend. Just a consideration.
Certainly a good idea. I can bring it up to the, to put that on and see if we can maybe have something later, maybe more than the general public can attend. So, yeah, yeah, great, great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye bye. And you're more than welcome to stay until eleven o'clock. No problem. All right. Next, we have a conflict of interest declaration. Members of the City Council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matters in which they or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit, or where such a benefit could be perceived. Next, we have the consent agenda items. So we have one, item number one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Are there, counsel, are there any questions on any of the items under consent?
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Yes.
On item seven.
Okay. Is that a question?
Just a question.
Okay.
You want to ask it? Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. A question probably for Public Works Director, Mr. Chavaria. So, as listed in the staff report, we had some emergency repairs that were needed for well sixteen. We had some equipment that was acting in a way that we ideally wouldn't. And in conversations that we had, we talked about the fact that we were kind of lucky that the, the company that we went through, they had a VFD on hand. And so some comments that were raised were, can we consider the potential of having some of this extra equipment on hand that's either specialized or can be needed in emergency purposes so that in the offhand that they don't have something on hand, we don't have to wait three to four weeks? We've talked about it a little bit, but I wanted the public to be able to hear your thoughts on that as well, and what potentially we can do going forward.
Yeah, sure. No, that's a great question, Councilmember Upal. We do have, I do have staff right now trying to identify some of the components within our water system that we can keep in inventory, such as pressure transmitters, because that's an item that we can utilize at all our well sites. But unfortunately, there are some scenarios where it's not a one size fits all for equipment, such as VFDs. You know, VFDs are VFDs that are water sites range anywhere from a hundred horsepower to two hundred horsepower. And these scenarios, this wouldn't be cost effective to try to keep a spare VFD for every well. But we can look into possibly procurement of the larger horsepower. It would run all our well sites to get us out of a pinch, out of a jam. Wouldn't necessarily fit in the cabinet, but it could get us by and reduce some downtime until we can procure the correct size. But yes, that's something that that we can. And we are planning to bring a staff report before council when those parts are identified for council consideration, for approving a spare parts or inventory list.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else before I contemplate a motion? Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open it for public comment. Is there anyone on the phone? Here and now, bringing it back to the chamber. Anyone in the chamber? Closing the public comment at seven fifty five, bringing it back to the dais. Counsel, any motions to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Potem Samra. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Wallace. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. Next, we have public hearings. Item number eight, consideration of a resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, maximum principal amount not to exceed thirty five million dollars for the purpose of financing and refinancing, and refinancing the acquisition, development, construction, and equipping of River Glen Apartments and execute of joint exercise of powers agreement with California Municipal Finance Authority. Is that your item? All right. It's all yours. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of staff, members of the audience. Miguel Galvez, contract planner, to present this item. I don't know what that was. This agenda item is being brought to the City Council at the request of Self-Help Enterprises and an affordable housing developer. They have a long history of developing and managing affordable housing projects in California Central Valley. Just a little background on this particular request. This involves a property or project that is proposed to be developed on a three point nine five acre site at the southeast corner of B Street and Wenton Parkway. The project site would be developed with six two-story and four three-story buildings for a total of eighty dwelling units. These are rentals. The units will be developed as one, two, three bedroom units to serve working families, seniors, individuals, and families at risk of homelessness. The project includes approximately a three thousand square foot community center, which provides office space for a full-time onsite manager and a resident services staff. On June twenty nineteen, I mean, twenty twenty three, the City Council approved the commitment of state of California awarded permanent local housing allocation funds in the amount of four hundred and thirty eight thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars to the Self-Help Enterprises Livingston B Street project, this project. A year later, on May thirty first, twenty twenty four, Self-Help Enterprises received a city land use approval under the Affordable Housing and High Roads Job Act of twenty twenty two, otherwise known as AB twenty eleven, to develop the affordable eighty unit of, excuse me, the eighty unit new affordable rental housing community. The project has been renamed and is now referred to as the Glen, the River Glen Apartment Projects. The project costs are estimated to total approximately forty seven million dollars. Of that amount, the developers seeking approximately twenty five million dollars in tax exempt bond cap to help finance the project. In addition, approximately one point eight million dollars in annual federal tax credits. For the bond financing to qualify as tax exempt bonds, the city must conduct a public hearing, otherwise known as a TFR hearing, to provide an opportunity to members of the community to speak in favor or against the use of tax exempt bonds for the financing of the project. It is my understanding that the tax bond funding does not oppose a financial ability, liability to the city. Moreover, Betsy McGovern Garcia of Self-Help Enterprises and Travis Cooper of the California Municipal Finance Authority are also present this evening and can respond to questions regarding this matter this evening. In summary, the developer, Self-Help Enterprises, is requesting the City Council take the following three actions. One, conduct a public hearing in compliance with the TFR requirements. in compliance with the TEFRA requirements. Two, adopt a resolution approving the issuance of a tax-exempt bonds by the California Municipal Finance Agency Authority. Two, a maximum principal amount not to exceed $35 million for financing of the River Glen Apartment Project. And three, authorize the mayor or designee thereof to execute the joint exercise of powers agreement with the California Municipal Finance Authority. City staff, Self-Help Enterprises staff, and staff from the California Municipal Finance Authority are available for questions.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question, just from the notes that you'd gone over. Miguel, at one point in your presentation, this was the point that you made right before, you said on May 31, 2024, Self-Help received land use approval. There was, there was a comment you made, something that took place a year prior to that, related to funds totaling around $400,000. Could you repeat what that comment was, please?
Yes. On June 2023, the City Council approved a commitment of State of California awarded permanent local housing allocation funds in the amount of $438,217 to the Self-Help Enterprises Livingston B Street Project, which is now referred to as the River Glen Project. So they, the city had provided some financial assistance that's been awarded to the city.
So money came from the state, and then we awarded that to Self-Help. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Miguel, that was a great presentation. The public that's not here, when they go to view it, they don't have anything on the screen to see. What happened to putting that up on the screen so they would see exactly what you're talking about? I mean, I know where it is, because I was on the planning commission, but what, the people that are at home don't understand. And then my next question would be for the mayor, how fast and how soon can you get a TEFRA meeting? When, when is that scheduled, or when can we schedule it? Because that has to be done first, if I read this right, and I understood, Miguel. We have to have the TEFRA meeting first. Am I correct?
Today, they'd be opening the public hearing, so that would be an action. Great. Are we directing the council?
We're directing the council to conduct the public hearing, yes.
Yes.
To respond to Councilmember Wallace's question, we did have a, a public hearing notice that described the location, that provided information if people had questions about it. The public hearing notice did describe the project, its location, so it wouldn't be a surprise to them as to where's that. This has been a project that's been in the works for a few years.
You said it's a mid-statement, because I must have missed it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What, when, what date was that?
What day was the public hearing?
Yeah, because I must have missed it, or I haven't seen it yet.
I don't have the affidavit. It was enough to meet our 10-day notice. I think it would have been Friday. Monica can help me. Today is the 6th, so it would have been...
I can't remember when. It was, it was like 80-year-old, right?
Yeah.
That one was posted on April 23rd.
April 20th.
20th.
25th, sorry.
Yes.
And here's the public hearing notice, if you guys want to look at it. It's on our website.
Yeah, go ahead. You have something to add?
I was just going to say, as far as, this is the public hearing. There's a 10-day notice. It's published, that lets the public know that there's going to be a TEFRA hearing. So now, this is, as soon as the mayor opens up the public hearing, this will be the, the public hearing in this, in this regard. That's, that's the TEFRA requirement, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
And by the way, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Travis Cooper with the California Municipal Finance Authority.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Miguel, you know, I'm not opposed to project. I think it's good. I'm trying to, in my mind, envision Wynton Parkway and southeast corner. Give me a physical reference to where Wynton Parkway and B intersect. Is it to the left of the stop, to the Welcome sign, or to the right?
If you're facing south, it would be to the left.
I'm facing this way.
Okay, if you're on B Street, heading west, it'll be on the left side. I think, Monica, the same as you, we'll be pulling up an area of the map. So, right now, it's where the sign is.
Yeah. So if you're coming down Wynton Parkway this way, like that, and is it to the left of the, Welcome Livingston sign, or to the right?
It'll be to the left of the sign, if you're facing south.
Right, right at the, but, so, we're, our plan is also to push Wynton Parkway to F Street at some point, right? I mean, to, yeah, F Street, right? Did this trigger anything? How far will this go, as far as the project?
It is the city's desire to...
I know it's kind of early, but still.
It is the city's desire to have Wynton Parkway extended. One of the challenges that the city has is that property, there's the area. Part of the property, the, the road would be developed, belongs to the school district. Thank you. If you can zoom in just a little bit, Monica, that'd be great. And so, even though the city would like to put the, if we go to the left a little bit, to the west, if you can move the, the screen to the left, where, or the other...
My left, sorry. My left on the right.
Yeah, yeah, keep going where, the way you're going, or the other way. Sorry. Where Wynton Parkway comes down. So you have the Livingston Medical Center. Keep going. If you can kind of show Wynton Parkway, there, go, if you can move it down a little bit now. Oh, you were going the right way. Sorry. Keep going.
Up?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so there's Wynton Parkway. I don't have a pointer with me.
I should have a pointer.
Oh, does it?
I should. Press on that. Did we see it? Right there.
Okay, thank you.
Just keep pressing on it.
Okay, here's my, so here's Wynton Parkway. Wynton Parkway is planned to go south and kind of curving this way. This part of the property belongs to the school district, and this property right here is where the, the project site is located. Ideally, we would like to have, it would be nice if we had the money to acquire that property for the school district and put Wynton Parkway, even not at a full width, four lanes, but perhaps at two lanes. But that property belongs to the school district, and my understanding is that they want to be compensated for that.
Yeah, that, that's a well-known fact from a long time ago, that they owned that corner there, and that whenever this does move forward, that would have to be acquired from the district. We understand that. So, that was my question, was unless they plan to, and I know it's way, way too early, that unless they plan to get an entry and exit on B, they would have to continue the extension of the Wynton Parkway, then, correct? And that's what, that was my question, is how far would it go? And that, that was my question, unless it's going to be on B Street.
Yeah, I, let me bring up, so the city does have some right-of-way, oh, you have a map, there's some right-of-way for Wynton Parkway that goes right here. And so, we don't have to acquire that, but this portion right in here, this, I'm trying to, that's something that we would have to work with the school district to obtain. Betsy, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, maybe I can just shed some light on this topic. Good evening, everyone. My name is Betsy McGovern-Garcia. I'm the Vice President and Director of Real Estate Development at Self-Help Enterprises, and I've been working on this project for a mere four years, so I know a few of the details about the project. We worked diligently to figure out a way to put Wynton Parkway through to connect it on the north end and the south end through the site and south of us. There's really two segments of right-of-way that are missing. Miguel's absolutely correct. We're missing the, the school right-of-way at that intersection, and then south of us, there's missing right-of-way to connect all the way through to the property south of us. And so, what we are doing as part of our project is we're dedicating all of the frontage land that is needed in order to construct our segments of Wynton Parkway. So normally, a landowner would be obligated to do their frontage improvements for us. That usually includes the construction of a three-quarter street until the other property develops. We're unable to do that here because it's a segment that connects with nothing virtually. And so, what we're working with the city on is obtaining a traffic study that studies this intersection, and then puts together a cost estimate for the value of the improvements, and then we're going to pay into the city our share of those improvements, and we're going to dedicate all of the land. So when the city is ready to put in those improvements, you have all the right-of-way that's needed to connect up the various segments. You have our money on, on account and can pay for those improvements. So, that was the best solution that we could come up with, given that it's an incomplete segment, and I don't think anyone wants a road that leads to nothing. So that's what we're doing to mitigate that, that condition.
Thank you very much for that good explanation, and that was one of, it's a long time concern for the community, and it was just kind of fit into it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Counsel, any other questions, comments?
So, at this time, I will open the public hearing at 8:11. Is there any... So, the consideration of a resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, maximum principal, as I explained earlier, not to exceed $35 million. Is there any public comment on the phone? Here and now, coming back into the chamber, is there any public comment in the chamber? Seeing now, closing the public comment on this item at 8:11, bringing it back to, bringing it back to the dais. So, for me, one question, and then again, I don't know who can answer this. And it refers back to the extension or the idea of opening Wynton Way all the way. And I know, I mean, projects take a long time to build, just, you know, we're probably looking at before, once you start breaking ground, and it's a year to two years, I think it's, it's a year timeframe that you guys are looking at. And then, I'm just thinking of, how can we figure out a solution to where we can figure out and build, is there a way to build Wynton Way all the way? I mean, and I also understand that, that, I mean, you're only responsible for your part of it, but, because if we do, you know, phase one now, phase two later, it's just, it's never going to get done. It's been, I mean, I, I kept on hearing about this project for, I don't know, last 18 years. And, I mean, it seems like we're getting closer and closer, but then again, I don't know if we can brainstorm in, in ways to get, get it done all at once. I mean, I'm not saying for you, for you to pay for all of it. I mean, if you can, then, you know, I'll take, we'll take it, I'm sure. Not a problem, but, you know, is there any ideas that you can think of, of how we can do that?
Yeah, you know, we are happy to participate in those conversations. We don't have direct contacts at the school district that we're able to meet with, and so if the city can shepherd, those conversations can, you know, get us in the room with the right people. We're happy to have those conversations. We're willing to, to construct the improvements. We're willing to, you know, do all of our frontage improvements and everything we need to do. It's really just a question of the right-of-way and having a willing participant by the school district and the city brokering those conversations. So, we're happy to, to participate in those conversations. There is some limited funding, Community Development Block Grant is an example of funding that will fund infrastructure. There's an infill infrastructure grant, qualifying infill projects. They actually have a notice of funding availability, one more remaining. The majority of the state funding programs for affordable housing are drying up, and all of that money is going away. But there is one more QIP NOFA. So if we could get the school district in the room and put together a partnership, we could move forward with funding applications. We're happy to do those applications. We're happy to manage construction. We're happy to put together the transaction, do the improvement plans, all the civil engineering. We just need a willing participant by the school district, and if the city can help bring that together, we'd love to participate.
And then, Mr. Mayor, besides the school district, I do believe that there's two other, is it one or two other owners on, on the rest, on, to the start of that? Just one?
Yeah. Is that correct? We only have one other one at the, at the other end, correct?
Yeah, there's two properties. The one owned by Harvey Galvan, and the other one, which is owned by Diego Castillo. That would complete the improvements to Wynton Parkway.
He's good.
Okay, so, so there's two, right? Mr. Galvan, is it Galvan?
Yes, Harvey Galvan.
Harvey Galvan and Castillo, apparently.
And Diego Castillo.
So, so maybe, maybe it might be a good idea to consider, if we can, if you're open to the, to those conversations.
Sure.
Maybe we can try and bring everybody together in the, in the same room and have those conversations and see, just brainstorm about ideas, and, you know, if we can get it all done all at once, I mean, you know, I mean, the benefit is for the community. I mean, eventually, depending on what the other plans are for the other people involved in, on the, on the other side.
Absolutely. Yeah, happy to participate in those conversations. We are working with the health clinic. They're the ones who owned the property that are selling to us. We are assisting them with undergrounding the canal, which is carryover condition of their development before they subdivided the parcel. So, anything we can do to support the community and move that forward, absolutely, we're at the table.
Yeah, there's, there's also other benefits to the other landowners, because once that street is improved and you got, you know, moving traffic, that only adds value to their property and, and opens up, you know, a lot of other benefits. And I know that Mr. Galvan has come before council a few times, saying, well, if you just let me, you know, give me back the property and I'll, you know, do it, and so forth and so on. So, yeah, there's, there's some good opportunities here, so we'll certainly catch up and put all the right pieces together.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
On a statement. I've talked to the city manager, and I've talked to the attorney. We have a building that we own that has not had a contract since 2003. We have to give that building a one-year notice, and it belongs to the school district. So now, we have some leverage with our school district. And that's all I need to say. The lawyer can say anything else if he wants.
All right, counsel, any other questions?
I have a few questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Before I ask, I want to ask our, our folks that came out tonight. Thank you, Travis. Thank you, Betsy. Do you guys have anything that you'd like to present of your own, separate from what was discussed? Or just say in general, because you may answer some of the, the questions that I might have.
Yeah, I might just add that, first and foremost, we're excited to be here. We're excited that this project is going to be starting construction. This is one of our final steps in closing our construction financing, and we are aiming to pull permits late May and start construction in June. So, we're already a member of your community with our Casitas del Sol property, and this just expands our partnership and our presence in the city. The action tonight is not an obligation of the city to be a guarantor, any kind of financial participant in the bonds. It is simply a functional hearing that is required for the issuance of the tax-exempt bonds, so you're not taking on any financial liability or risk. And additionally, we're asking you to join the JPA that allows CMFA to issue the bonds. So essentially, public entities are allowed to issue tax-exempt bonds by virtue of joining the JPA. That authority is passed through to CMFA as the issuer. They take on the ongoing monitoring, the compliance, you know, all of the legal tax issues and everything that goes along with tax-exempt bonds. So, we appreciate you hosting the public hearing this evening and being willing to consider joining the JPA so that we can move forward with this financing.
Just to add what, to what Betsy said, you know, CMFA, we have over 350 members, cities and counties and special districts throughout California, who have joined the CMFA. And we've issued, you know, over 500 different projects throughout California for affordable housing projects. It really is no obligation of the city. That's why we It really is no obligation of the city, that's why we structure these deals this way. And in addition to that, there's some money that goes back to the city for the work that you've done here to get this on the agenda as we share our issuance fee with the city as well. And so happy to answer any questions that you have about the CMFA or anything like that as well.
First question I'd ask is, and I'll be 100% honest with you folks and also the folks on the dais. I've only been on for the better part of like five months. This is the first affordable housing project I've dealt with and it took me an obscene amount of time to figure out what was going on with this project. I did not know some of the numbers that were mentioned until the staff report related to when funding came in, when this process started moving. I just saw that we're looking to approve a $35 million bond. I came across a document and it is the staff report of the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. I'm not sure how much jurisdiction they have over any of your work, but this was plugged to me from somebody that was tracking affordable housing projects. And this project was listed within that report, all the details. And within there, they say, it's listed that there's a $25 million, 100,000 or so tax-exempt bond cap for this project. This is from the December 11, 2024 meeting of the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. I don't know if they have jurisdiction over you all or if they have authority to decide how much this bond can be, but we're looking at a $35 million number. And so I wanted to ask about some of the legal background of that. Are we able to approve as high as we are?
Yes, so a couple of things. The California Tax Credit Allocation Committee is the state agency that issues the low-income housing tax credits. In this project, we are using 4% federal credits. In order to be eligible to use 4% federal low-income housing tax credits, we have to pair those tax credits with at least 50% of the project's construction financing via tax-exempt bonds. So the reason the tax-exempt bonds, which are issued by the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee, or SIDLAC, the reason why the bonds are lower than the total project cost is because we only finance roughly 55%, the mandatory 50% plus a 5% buffer with the tax-exempt bonds. The tax-exempt bonds come in as construction financing, they're issued by CMFA and the bank lender actually uses those bonds to issue the construction loan for the project. We will have a tax-exempt construction loan and a taxable construction loan because only 55% of the project is covered with the tax-exempt bonds. And then the balance of the construction or the balance of the permanent financing is made up of low-income housing tax credit equity, which is the 4% federal credits that are sold to a private investor. So we're leveraging private investments to fund the project. And then State of California Housing and Community Development is funding resources into the project also. So that is why the tax-exempt bond issuance is lower than the total project cost.
Thank you. It was listed in the staff report, it was listed, it was said by Miguel, thank you for your presentation, that we have, we're essentially not liable for any of the money. Are there any potential exemptions to that? If so, what are those and what does the risk assessment look like for the city?
Yeah, there's no exemptions. This is structured so that the city has no liability whatsoever. CMFA is issuing the bonds, the city's not issuing the bonds. That's why we hold this TEFRA hearing, you approved the CMFA as the issuer. So to answer your question, no.
So there's no chance that this hurts us down the line? Zero?
There is no chance that I'm aware of. I mean, I can't speak in, that I'm aware of, there's, it's not an obligation of the city at all. It's all throughout the bond documents, throughout the TEFRA resolution. It's not an obligation of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Roy, do you have by any chance any potential background on that that is separate from what the gentleman just stated?
Based on our review of the materials that were provided, I would agree with what he said. Based on the documents provided, it's not an obligation of the city.
I have my.
Sorry. Question for lady from Self Help. We don't have to approve this, hypothetically speaking. If this didn't get approved, is it feasible for Self Help to fund their project without this money from this bond?
The answer is no. As you stated, the bond I think is up to 25 million. It's 55% of our project costs roughly during construction. We need the TEFRA hearing. This is simply an opportunity for the public to comment on the issuance of the bonds, which was the public hearing that was already held, and then to join the JPA to give the authority to CMFA to issue the bonds. If for some reason the TEFRA resolutions did not go forward, we would not be able to use the tax-exempt financing and it would render our project infeasible.
So if we say, if we decide not to approve this bond, the project dies tonight?
Well, it wouldn't just die tonight because we have invested probably over a million dollars at this point and the city is a lender on the project in the form of the permanent local housing allocation funding that was previously committed and also under the commitments that are made under the city housing element. So no, the conversation would not be forward, would not be over. There'd be additional conversation and there would be ramifications, but it would limit our ability to immediately close the bond this month, which is the goal, to get under construction, to pay our building permit fees and move forward with the project as we have been acting in good faith with the city as a partner for several years.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, counsel?
Thank you. Counsel, anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, so I have.
I will second it.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Wallace, second by Mayor Potem. Roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Opal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you guys for being here tonight. Thank you. And we will ask staff to reach out and put those conversations together and see what comes out of it.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
May I make a comment real quick? A question for staff before we move formally from the item. I am generally speaking, very pleased with the amount of background context that we have in our staff reports, generally very comprehensive project timeline. I had very little context from the staff report for this item coming into this meeting. Miguel, all the background you provided was amazing. It would have been awesome to have seen on the staff report though. And so this is the first time this has happened, I just did want to ask staff, can we, when we are looking at projects like this, always include the timeline from beginning, how we got to where we are today? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have discussion and potential action items. Item number nine, consideration of a resolution establishing the creation of a fire services ARHAC committee with the sunset provision of May 6, 2026 and providing an effective date. Staff recommendation, approved resolution. I'm not sure who.
I'll be, I'll be addressing those. So Mayor and counsel, we, the, you know, the community was so gracious enough to actually pass Mezural this last election and so that's actually providing the community what some much-needed public safety money. We're looking at, there was, there was an approximate dollar amount that was identified that was going to be close to $2.3 million. After we did a little more work with HDL for this year, it looks like it's going to be about 1.8. So there's a lot of work to be done as it relates to fire services in general. So staff believes that an ad hoc committee is much needed so that we can engage, you know, with the council and different stakeholders within the, when I say stakeholders, I'm talking about those directly involved, like the volunteers, like Cal Fire and others and staff, so that we can bring some much-needed recommendations to the council and give some actual analysis and review for council. So we're basically asking for two things. One is the establishment of the ad hoc committee of two members of the council. And then number two, ad hoc can't go on forever, so if we can change on the, on the staff report, it should say May 6, 2026 versus May 6, 2025. So one year. And if the council desires to continue it, then they would, we would have to amend and bring a resolution before council at that time. So again, it's just, this is just an opportunity for us to really just focus completely on fire services and all the components associated with having fire protection services for the city of Livingston.
Roy, if I may ask, can, before we start, can you provide the description and the difference between the ARHAC committee and a standing committee?
Sure, Mayor. So as the city manager mentioned, ad hoc committee, you typically have a specific purpose, so the council imbides a scope of power for that committee or a scope of inquiry. And that scope of inquiry is for a specific set of time. It can't be something that goes on in perpetuity. If it were something that would go on in perpetuity, then it would be considered a standing committee. And the different, the main difference between a standing committee and an ad hoc committee is a standing committee must be, must be Brown Act compliant. So all meetings have to be noticed within the Brown Act requirements. An ad hoc committee doesn't have that same rigid structure because it is temporary and has a very narrow, narrow scope. And the other component is it's purely to provide recommendations to council and staff on operations of the city or the particular scope that's been directed by the council. So it has no like, what we call legislative authority or decision-making authority.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you restate that clearly? I know I got it. There was confusion on social media about ad hoc committees being able to make decisions. Can you clarify, they cannot make decisions only, can you clarify that, please?
Yeah, just so it's clear, yeah, an ad hoc committee cannot make decisions. They can only provide recommendations to the council. Council is the only legislating authority.
Yeah, and therefore any action the council takes is subject to public scrutiny, public hearings and open meeting laws, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And so counsel, so on May 20th, which is, which staff is working on right now, is to bring forward the Mezural Oversight Committee. And as Roy was mentioning, that is going to be, you know, that committee is basically, is going to monitor the Mezural funds and the revenues to make sure that, you know, everything, that those funds are going to be used for its intended purpose. And so there's going to be, and make sure that it's being efficient, effective and transparent. And so that, and then the council will basically appoint members to that standing committee.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anything else before I go off for public comment? So if not at this time, I will go off for public comment. Is there any citizen comments on the phone at 8:33? Anyone on the phone in regards to this item? Hearing none, bringing it back into the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, closing, the citizen comments at 8:34. Counsel, anything else, recommendations?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Given that the time constraints, because our contract runs out with the county within, I think, 13 to 14 months approximately, I would like to go ahead if it's legally, through legal, is to first establish the ad hoc committee and also appoint the members tonight. Is that doable?
It's sufficiently agendized. In the title, it says establishing the creation of the ad hoc committee. That can be sufficient to mean establishing the membership since it's going to be exclusively staffed by council members.
Thank you.
All right, so.
If there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we establish a head hot committee and I would also like to appoint two members at this time. I know they're not going to have a choice, but I would like to first appoint Councilmember Opal, he's the one that's guaranteed to be here at least three more years or four years, so we're not sure. And then I'll think, given the importance of this ad hoc committee and the, and the important to the community, have our own fire services, I also like to appoint the mayor as a second member of the ad hoc committee. And set the provision date, the sunset date to May 6, 2026.
Okay, so do we have to accept?
Yes.
Happy to volunteer.
I guess I will accept, ask to volunteer. So is that a motion?
It is a motion and thank you for not having to break your arm twisting it, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Potem Samra, is he going to second?
I'll second it. I think the face of the city and our youngest member that we know is going to be here for four years, I will not be, I'll probably be in heaven somewhere, hopefully, but I won't be, I definitely won't be here. So, and then I think it's the best two people right now. And then when we get to Mezural, I'm going to volunteer for that because I like accounting.
All right, so we have a motion and a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Potem, the sunset was May 6, 2026?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, Councilmember Opal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Next, we have item number 10. Discussion and direction regarding the display of the flags along downtown Main Street. Staff recommendation is to give direction.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. Anthony Chavilla, Public Works. Counsel, the staff report you have before you is staff is requesting that the mayor and council provide direction to staff regarding the display of flags along downtown Main Street, specifically from D Street to Liberty Market. I do want to add a little bit of clarity. I'm referring to the USA service, USA flags and the service flags, such as Navy, Army, Marines Air Force and the POW flag. So we did provide some options for council to consider. One, continue displaying the flags at status quo all year round. Two, display the flags during special dates and events. Three, display the flags during spring, summer and remove during fall and winter. Specifically, the dates would be April 1st to November 11th, Veterans Day. Happy to, if you have any questions or staff's looking for a direction from council on how they would like to fly the flags.
Counsel, any questions at this time? Just before I go off for public comment, I was thinking, you know, when I was reading the item, I think it's a great idea and I do appreciate the options that you were able to include in the, in the report. And something that I seen in another community, you know, just thinking if we have, you know, depending on what the council direction is, if council direction is to move forward, thinking about the different communities that we have in Livingston, just off the top of my head, without going to a lot of research, we have members from the Punjabi community we have members from the Punjabi community. We have a good history of Japanese communities, Portuguese communities, Filipino communities. And, and I'm probably forgetting some other communities. But thinking of that already, and, and would it be a bad idea or, or a good idea or not a bad, or not a good idea at this time to consider including flags from those different communities to represent, represent, be representative on Main Street as well? So I, I just wanted to put it out there for, to think about and consider.
So that's a good idea. Let me, so are you saying that the times we're not displaying service flags, we display country flags? Is that your thought process?
Yes, I guess in a few words, yes.
Yeah, and service flags are down, country flags are up. Yeah?
Well, I mean, it could be, I mean, I'm, well, I, I wasn't thinking that far yet. I was just thinking if there's a way that we, you know, it would be very, I mean, we already have the bigger-than-life art.
Yes.
On Wynton. So that is one way that we have done, that this city has gone to represent different, different groups in our community. So, you know, this would be another additional way. You know, but so I wasn't thinking that far. One or the other, you know, I, I, I'm only, I only have four years' experience, so. But anyway, yes.
I would ask counsel to possibly consider maybe flying them in a different location. Because if we're taking the flags down, we're taking them down during fall and winter if council chose so. And we'd, staff would be running into the same issues with them getting weather beaten, you know, wrapped around, causing maintenance issues as well.
Or maybe not, you know, maybe it's not, it's not the right timing for that. But anyways, I was just, you know, but yes, I, and going back to your report, part of the recommendation was to not have them up during that time because of, you know, they get, they get beat up really bad.
Yeah.
During the winter. Yeah. All right, so at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? 8:42. Hearing none coming to, back into the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the public comment at 8:42. Bringing it back to the dais. Counsel, questions, suggestions, recommendations, direction?
Shmair?
Yes, go ahead.
I have, I, I think I'm cool with option three. If it saves the flags for a little bit, also makes it easier on our staff. I'm happy to move forward with that after the rest of the council is as well.
For people watching at home, can you explain what option three is?
Sorry, public. Option three is to display the flags during the spring and the summer and to remove them during the fall and the winter. The dates that are listed on our report are from April 1st to November 11th, which is Veterans Day. And I'm sure that would shift every year depending on whenever Veterans Day falls. The thing with option two, which, the reason why I'm not a big fan of it is because we're going to have to put them up and take them down, I'm assuming, every time. And it's just, I don't want to put that much time on our staff. I feel like it's a little bit unnecessary. And so if we can save some wear and save some time for our public work folks, I think option three is a decent way to go.
Is that a motion?
If there's no other comments or questions from council, I'll motion to approve option three to display the flags during the spring and the summer and remove them during the fall and the winter.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Upal and second by Councilmember Wallace. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Upal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you, counsel.
I was just thinking, just, just, just after the fact, do we have a city flag? Have we had one before? Can? No. What, what? What, Jackie?
Jackie? Can you, or David, you know? David, do you ever remember seeing a city flag? You do not? For some reason, I do. I don't know why, but maybe I lose my mind.
You know, just, just off topic, just, just thinking about maybe contemplating the idea of creating a city flag that, you know, I mean, I mean, it'll be just, I've seen some other cities that have a city flag. Maybe we can start contemplating the idea. I know that in the past, there's, there's been considerations of updating our city logo if maybe it is that time. And then if not, then, you know, create a city flag. I mean, it could, it could be very simple as just an old white, white flag with the logo on the, on the, in the middle without, you know, going into colors and shapes or different things and, you know, and we can always have it on display. And then it could also be part of the flags out on Main Street. But anyway, so just, it, it just came to mind. And then maybe PD, I don't know, do they have a city, a city flag? I mean, a PD flag? Maybe they can think, think about one and then have another flag displayed out on Main Street as well. Anyways, just crazy ideas, thinking outside the box. All right, so moving forward, item number 11, discussion and potential direction around Brown Act violations. So, yes.
I requested the item. And so if there's, if there's no staff or other council comment, I'm happy to talk about why I requested the item and what I was thinking going into this.
Go ahead.
So I, I was unsure on how I wanted to, to navigate this discussion, just given it's a sensitive topic. But the cat is out of the bag with a lot of things already. So I'm just going to be very straightforward and transparent on how I feel about this and why I requested this. It is common knowledge in the city of Livingston that there are all kinds of actions that are taken that are highly unethical and/or illegal. This has been going on for a few years. In my opinion, it has toned down a little bit, but still present. Namely, one that has come to my attention recently and has been mentioned several times over the last couple of months is Brown Act violations, specifically the leaking of closed session information to the public. There are people who have verbatim stated to me comments and/or decisions that were made in closed session when they were not present there and they were not reported out. And it, it's, it's been said to me by multiple people that it's common knowledge that what you guys say in there does not stay in there. And so to me, that's highly concerning because one, it's not only highly unethical and illegal, but there's a lot of sensitive information that gets discussed in closed session. When I first started getting into politics and I learned about what the Brown Act was, I was very frustrated to learn that closed session even existed. I have a strong distrust for elected officials. And then to know that they could just go in a back room and talk completely amongst themselves and have nobody know what's going on, I did not like the idea of that. After being on this side of the dais, I understand the reason why certain, certain conversations have to take place in there and why certain things should never get leaked. And it's very concerning to me that consistently, this is, this is something I've heard once. It's something I've heard at least five to six times in the last four months, that things that are being discussed and stated are being put out into the public. For me to, to sit there, listen to that, and not try to request any potential direction or way to, to fix that is unacceptable on my end as a council member. And so that's the mindset that I take going into this item. I don't think any of you have heard anything different as it relates to the leaking of closed session information. You know, specific instances, there's allegations that are made. Without investigation, there's no way to prove. But it's essentially common knowledge that that's the case. And so what I would propose to council, open to your opinion on this, whether or not you like it, whether or not you want to refine it, or if you want to move in a completely different direction, is for us to create some sort of reporting mechanism, specifically within the city. This would allow for information to get directly to the council, to the city manager, to the city attorney. I think that would be up to the choosing of the individual that reports. They would allow for anonymity when applicable. To be fully transparent, I've already had a couple of conversations about this with our city attorney. And he's made it clear that depending on what took place, if somebody wanted to report something that was unethical or illegal, there are, there's a, a chance that anonymity is impossible just depending on the nature of that instance and the legal background related to how those instances need to be handled. However, I think if we did decide to move forward with this, we would make it very clear on whether or not anonymity could be, would be possible for the individual reporting based on the type of complaint they might report. The reason I'm proposing a potential for a reporting is because, you know, somebody asked me, they're like, hey, closed session information is getting leaked all the time. Why don't you do something about it? And I'm like, really? This is my first hearing that this is getting leaked all the time. I can't act on something that I don't know. There's a number of things that have came up since I've been on council and slightly before I got on where people are asking me, why isn't council doing something about this? Why aren't you doing something about this? And my, my honest answer is I didn't know until you just said it to me. It's not always easy to come up to any of us, whether it's council, whether it's city manager or city attorney. We, we have a certain amount of, of power within the city and influence on decisions that get made. And just based on actions that have been taken in the past by folks on this dais and by elected officials all across the world, I can understand why folks might feel very uncomfortable reporting anything. And so without getting too far into the weeds, that's essentially what I'm looking at. It may not be the best solution. I'm open to your guys' thoughts and ideas. But I do feel like for us to, to know very clearly that this is taking place and to do absolutely nothing about it is entirely unacceptable. If you don't want to do this, open to hearing your thoughts, but something's got to get done because where we're at right now, it's, it's just not going to fly going forward. And I'm hoping you're hearing, hearing your thoughts on, on how you'd like to move on it.
Counsel, anything else?
I have a quick thought on it.
Yes, go ahead.
Number one, we'll assume your sources are right. So we do need a mechanism. But sometimes we're perpetuating that ourselves. And I repot to your post, Mayor, about something that you posted online as Jose Moran. And I commented it back to you. Do you remember that post? You said there was a handshake in the closed deal meeting before there was a closed session meeting. And I said, well, you must have been at a different meeting I have because I had never heard of it either. So are we perpetuating this? Or was there something in fact that happened? And if there is so, why didn't you report it? I mean, we're putting that out there. Now we're making the public think there is something going wrong. Well, is there? I don't, I don't know. I don't know where that came from, but it caught me off guard. It's like, wait a minute. And I've only been on five or six months too. So a lot of planning council commission experience with City Hall. But I've never heard that since I've been on. Nobody has mentioned it to me. But I can still walk around and go shopping. Very few people know who I am and I like it. Because then I can, I just hear people talking. So that, that's worked out good. But that would be my only input. I don't know how. We'd probably need RC's input on exactly how. And that goes back to some of our training. Do you need an extra person other than the direct supervisor to go to when we went through our training just recently? Is there another odd person, an employee in the city could report to other than their direct boss, other than to the city manager? And it was, one of the things they suggested was to a city council member. I'm just throwing that all out there.
Something that I can add in, and then I'm not, I'm not going to be able to respond to your question because of closed session information. But the only thing that I can say is that I can neither, something that I learned in the process of talking to different agencies is that I can neither, what's the language they use? I can neither confirm or deny what you're asking. So, and, but I agree, I agree. I think it's, so I've been, I have read a lot about Brown Act. And actually, last night I spent a good number, well, not, not too much, but probably a couple of hours just reading and researching. I do subscribe to, what's the state agency? No. The, yeah, to the FPPC. And I always get like weekly emails and updates and reports about different, different things that have, are happening elsewhere or, and, you know. But one thing that I learned is that, yes, I, I do agree that there should be a system in place. And I can, I can neither confirm or deny if we have tried to have something in place in the past. But what I can say is that there needs, in my opinion, in my opinion, there's four different ways that this could be done. And it's very simple. If I have a question about something legal, I either reach out to the city manager or to, or to legal for advice. Because I don't want to do something that is going to be done wrong or illegally, or that I'm breaking any, any procedures. And then I can go from there. But if we should be able, or anybody should be able to reach out to legal, I think legal is, it's, it's always the best rather than the city manager for this particular issue. Because probably more than likely, he's going to have to refer it back to legal or to another agency. So my, my recommendation would be always to reach out to legal and say, hey, you know, I have this concern. Is this a Brown Act violation, yes or no? This is, this is what I receive. And, and if, and even if I reach out to legal, I, I, I still have the option to reach out to the district attorney, to the Department of Justice, and to the FPPC, and to the grand jury. So that actually is five. Or four, okay? So local DA, DA's office, Department of Justice, FPPC, grand jury, and legal. So it's actually five different ways. You know, there, there's nothing that would hold me back either as a council member or as a resident from, from contacting any of those agencies or legal. But should we have something in place? Yes, because most of the, most of the time, people out there don't know, you know, I mean, or they're just afraid, really. But, but yes, I mean, I, it's very limited to, to what else I can personally say about this topic. But I, I think it's, we, as a council, we should not need to have or give direction to legal to say, yes, go ahead and do this. It should be automatically. But, but then again, I think this is a good opportunity for all of us as a council to say, let's do, let's put this in place. Let's make a recommendation that if anything comes or anything is presented to legal as a potential, possible Brown Act violation, and then legal sees the evidence and it's like, and then legal says, you know what, there is potential Brown Act violation? Let me email the DA's office or the DOJ or the FPPC, you know, without having the responsibility or the obligation of legal having to ask council. Am I, can I do this? You know, if we can do that now, or, or by council's decision now, or, or give direction to bring this back where, where council needs to make it official and say, legal, you are responsible, and we want you to do this, this, and that. Then by all means. But, but I think there should be something in place for anyone in the community to be able to know what the process is if they don't know already. Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One thing is what Councilmember Upal has said. It's been ongoing things where people accuse. It's been ongoing things where people accuse others of doing things. And one thing, we as council live in a very political world. Everyone has people that they don't support, or they're a good somebody. And, and to me, if somebody feels, if it's council member, we already have mechanisms in place. We contact the city attorney and we done with it. That's already done. Are you suggesting that a citizen should be able to just contact the city attorney? And then say, hey, I wanna do this? That to me, something doesn't seem right. City, city residents do not at large have access to the city, uh, city attorney. They have access to the city manager. Now, if a citizen can come to you and say, I heard this, they're already confident enough to say, by coming to you in person, they're already saying, hey, I am here. They're not gonna have any problems. If they were serious about what they're feeling or what they're saying, is to pick up the phone, call the grand jury, call the district attorney's office, call FPPC, call state attorney's office. You can call a whole bunch of people. And if they're not willing to step up and say, well, this is a violation, attach your name to it, how do we know they're not just trying to cause havoc? There is a lot of things that do happen like that. Now, we have, over the years, had council members gotten in trouble. And where they've been reported to the grand jury, they investigated, they had their findings. And we've had to where council members were doing things or thought they were unethical or something, whatever. There was enough legal and mechanisms in place, not only legal mechanisms, but mechanisms in place, where it went, they go somewhere. I'm not gonna get into details of what has happened over the years, because then I'll be subject to our conversation. But that has happened already. And what I can do if, and what the attorney, I can actually, if you want to, we can do a closed session. I can report where some of those mechanisms have worked. And also where people have reported things and saying, these guys are doing unethical because they did this, or they gave a one-foot sign because somebody's name, you know? There's gonna be all kinds of things. And a lot of times, in a small city like this, especially some of the heated closed session things we may have, people already kinda got things figured out already. They don't need to hear from us. They already got it figured out what it's gonna be like. They already know. So-and-so, whatever, or by, but what next step happened, they already got it figured out. To me, I think I agree with Mr. Wallace. By inferring that these things are happening, we're actually putting ourselves off and say, what's really happening? When there is not really a whole lot happening. Sometimes, actions we take or not take already clarify what happened. And people are smart enough to know where five of us or even pass by, whatever, they know our positions on things. They already kinda, it's easy to figure out all these things. And to me, I think we're just opening up a can of worms that don't need to be opened. There's mechanisms. If some citizen has a concern, we can create a brochure or something and say, here are your options. Go do it. We don't need to have a city man, city attorney involved in everything. You got enough to do. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to some of those comments?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm a, I don't know if the city attorney necessarily needs to be involved in every complaint or issue that might come up. I actually didn't state that in my, I don't think I stated that in my initial comments. And Mr. Moran brought that up, of having the attorney there. I, what I'm really looking for is a way for, essentially, if people would like it, if it's for the information to get to us as a council. Because at the end of the day, we're a decision-making body. And if we decide to do something about it, we then can. Again, people ask me, why don't you do something about X? Well, I didn't know about whatever you just said until you just told me. But now if somebody has the ability to report something, there's no, there's no hiding that we don't know. We know. We set up a mechanism to report. It came to us. Now the ball's in our court to see if we wanna do something about it. And that's where I think it should lie. It should be up to the council, if something comes up, to do something about whatever it is. Now, you made a comment about people saying whatever they want. You can't stop people from saying any, whatever they want or pretending, et cetera. They can do that with other bodies as well, whether it's the cops, the DA, et cetera. We don't have to investigate every matter. We can see something come in, based on whatever information is presented. We can see that there's no merits to it and just ignore it. Like we would if somebody said something to us on the street. You know what I mean? I just, I, I wanna make sure that, that people know that if they wanna get something to all of us without putting their name on it, they can. There was a comment made about if people are willing to, to say something to you personally, they should be able to, they should be willing to put their name on it. That implies that there's never been retaliation for people that actually blow the whistle and go all the way. We know that's not the case. There's, there's a lot of, of horrible things that happen in politics, especially to those that speak up. And I don't blame people for being afraid to speak. Just last week, I heard a story about a school administrator that was asked to delete records or alter records of a student by their, by their superior. And they didn't know what to do or where to go. And, and the reason why I bring that up is because even though I put, even though I asked about this in relation to Brown Act violations, this is really, to me, this could be about anything illegal and or unethical that takes place within the city. Whether that's among council, among staff, among the public, that they feel that we should know. I, I think there, there has to be a way to get information to us without putting your name on it. It's very intimidating to come up and put your name on something and go through with it. Especially if it's a legitimate matter and it turns into some sort of legal case. That's very tough to deal with. And I don't wanna have to put anybody in that position. This isn't, and I'll admit this as well, this isn't a legitimate fix to the problem, because there's still no preventing somebody from acting unethically or illegally, right? Somebody can still do that. All I want is for council to, to not be able to pretend that they weren't aware if there was a mechanism for us to be aware. And I want the community to know that if they wanna get information to us without having to put their name on it, if they're able to do that, they can. At the end of the day, the ball's in our court whether or not we wanna move forward. This may not be the best way to go about this. However, I, I feel like there should be something. Mr. Wallace, you made a, a comment. When you had last asked if we were perpetuating, I felt like that was directed towards me and Mr. Moran both?
Me?
No, no, no. I said, Mr. Wallace.
Oh.
It was not? Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, I misunderstood your question then. But I, I don't think we're inferring here, just from conversations that I've had. And I'm not gonna say with who. It's very clear to me that there's information that was discussed back there that went to an individual that shouldn't have had it. And so, again, this doesn't have to be the way we move forward. But I, I do think there has to be something aside from this. If you don't wanna move forward with this, I'd like to hear what the other proposals are. Because sitting idly and doing nothing is not an option to me.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
To me, if one of us is accused, and I say one of us, because we're the electeds and there's mechanisms for staff and everybody else already, do we really want that council to be involved to begin with? Because then we're gonna be accused of covering up for each other. Well, he just did it because he's got friends on the council and they're ignoring me. The best thing is, say, hey, you know what? Report it to DA. You can report it to them anonymously, look at it. Keep the council out of it. You don't want council involved in any kind of this thing. You want at least six feet away from it. Hey, you, you think it's something serious? Go report it. Let them decide. Because if they report it to us and we sit there and we don't, we say, no. Or what happens if, and I'll use my, somebody says, Mr. Samra did this? And we go through all this turmoil and all this stuff in there? And you put this guy, person says, I didn't do anything, through all this thing. Then nothing came out of it. Now, is that person that caused all that havoc, is that person responsible? Or he just walks away, says, ha, ha, I got you? You know, there's that, there's that mechanism too. Ha, ha, I got you. You know, there's, there's a lot of, the under-politics are very nasty sometimes. It is, there's the grand jury. They investigate. There's a district attorney's office, FPPC, there's these agencies. They're six feet away from us. We have no influence on what they decide. If they talk to you and say, it doesn't merit anything, well, then there's nothing there. To me, we should actually stay further away from it than being involved at all. Thank you.
You know, I've been contemplating and analyzing the different comments. And, and it takes me back to, to two different situations. One, as a, as an educator, you know, I, every year, every year, it's, I think this year, it's, it was 12 different trainings that I have to go through. 12 different, 12 different trainings, like the AB 123, like the, you know, like the Brown Act training that we do every two years. As educators, we gotta do that every year. And it's, and it's all kinds of different topics. But, but one of them is understanding and reviewing and that I, as an educator, we become obligated reporters. If, if, if we ever are in doubt or thinking that a student is having issues or is being physically abused, or verbally abused, or bullied, we have to report it. We have to, you know, make a report. It's not up to me, as an educator, and it shouldn't be up to me as a council, you know, like, oh, for me to make the decision. All they, all they need to do is, as a resident, if it's a resident, then they can come to me and then I, you know, this is what I do all the time with, with concerns or recommendations in the city. Like for instance, if there's, you know, a, a resident complains or has a concern about something in their neighborhood, they come to me and they say, well, you know what? Mr. Moran, I really like to remain anonymous. Don't worry about it. I address it with the city manager. City manager then, you know, disperses it to the particular department that they might need to look at it, look into it. And, and that's it. You know, and, and so, I don't see that as me, people reaching out to me as, you know, asking me to remain anonymous. I mean, obviously, they're doing it for a reason. They don't feel comfortable. You know, can you imagine also having someone coming to PD and saying, you know, I wanna report this crime, or, or not report a crime because they're afraid? You know, I want them to be able to feel confident and, and, and trust us as their representatives to provide, you know. And 99% of the time, that there's an issue and it relates to the police department, you know, the resident doesn't need to get involved. It's just, it's just, it might be a matter of simple little things that PD can address it without having the need of, of the actual report by the individual, you know? Obviously, there's gonna be the one time, or the 10% or the 20% or whatever, that they need to actually talk to the resident, then I have to ask the resident, it's like, hey, they really need to talk to you. And then, you know, the resident will tell me, you know, what the situation is or what they, how they feel about it, and then just, just go from there. But, yes, is, are there agencies that, that, that people can go directly to? Yes, there, there's always been. But the problem is, I, I, I don't think I would feel comfortable telling someone that come to me and report something to me and say, oh, it's not my problem. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, here, here's their number. Go do it yourself. Then I'm not, I'm not doing my job as a, as a representative of, of the person in that community. And then in my, in my own perspective, if, if they come to me and report a possible Brown Act violation and I, and I disregard it, then I'm part of the problem. I'm just, basically, what they're gonna say is, well, you're just sweeping it under the rug. And I don't think I would feel comfortable doing that. But that's just me. You know, I, I would rather. And then obviously, you know, I, I, I concur with you. This, there is an issue. And I think that we should have something in place. And I would be very in support of having something in place. Even though this could be another avenue of, of, that we're giving to anybody to be able to make a report on anything that they're concerned about. And yes, maybe, maybe some of those times is really nothing. But it's not up to me to make the decision. If, if it's something that is related to public works, to finance, to, or to PD, it's up to them to make that final decision. I'm doing my job. I'm doing my due diligence. Or if it's the DA, you know, or DOJ, or the FPPC, it's, all I have to do is report it. Now, it's, it's really up to them to investigate and decide whether or not, actually, it's really up to them if they even want to investigate. If, if they don't even want to investigate, then it's, 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 they made that decision. You know? But, or even if they investigate and they find nothing, then, you know, that's their finding. But to do nothing, I, I agree. It's, it's, I think it's, I don't wanna be known or remembered as someone that just tried to, to make a decision that looked like I'm, I'm covering up something or just sweeping it under the rug, or that I'm just kicking the can down the road like we have done in the past. Thank you.
Mr. Moran, may I comment?
Yes, go ahead. Like I said, even though on the agenda, this is listed as an item around Brown Act violations, to me, the scope of this would expand beyond that if we decided to move on it. And I could also see this, maybe not specifically a reporting policy, but this mechanism specifically being used for something positive, completely non-controversial. Essentially, what I'm looking at is a way to get information to council. And if somebody wants to stay anonymous, they can. There might be times where people would like to say something to us, make a request, and they don't feel comfortable asking. Even if it's completely non-controversial, you would be surprised how many times I, people have told me like, hey, I was too afraid to ask you for even a question. And so it, it could be like a Dropbox type thing. Maybe there could be some sort of form. Would you like to let the council know about this, that? There would be options. Open to that. One thing I would also like to ask too is, at the very least, can we explore what, Mr. Moran, you mentioned existing mechanisms. We, we've talked about a few of them. Can we at least explore what existing mechanisms look like? Not just for council, but for staff? So I'm sure you guys have like know your rights stuff for HR. I don't know exactly what it looks like. But I would just be curious to know what that is now, what the nuances are around that. And then for the community as well. At the, at the very least, we could provide information, I feel like. At the very least. Again, I, I got nothing to hide. And if people want to be able to say something to us without us knowing who they are, I wanna give them the option. But I would like to start by exploring what we got right now.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Throw something out there. Why don't we put this on a meeting agenda and have an ADA from the county come and talk to the public and explain exactly what the Brown Act is and how they should handle it? And that would be the first step. Get it to everybody. Let them tell us what their options are, what are their options? Can they guarantee a new, that they're not gonna be known? No. But maybe that would be a good starting point to get some feedback back to us. But then, because now, if someone tells me they saw something, they were told something by somebody that was in closed session, I'm gonna be on the call phone to the attorney first thing. I'm not gonna call anybody else on the council. I'm gonna call the attorney and then look for advice. So why don't we get an ADA here? Tell them what, what do they do? How do they handle them? And what would be a recommendation for the city?
I think we can at least direct the staff to contact the DA's office. I don't, I know you don't mean ADA, you mean DA.
I don't know. They just appointed a new one. I don't know. But there's
No, the DA's office.
No.
Maybe we can get, maybe like a staff report on what the current mechanisms is, and we can start from there.
I'm open to that. I'm open to that.
So also, we just had a Brown Act training, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think this specifically
And if you remember in the meeting, in the training, they showed where people got their, you know, their hideous and trouble for doing those things, so that there is their, you know, their hideous and trouble for doing those things, so that there is mechanisms in place out there that do work, you know, just, but I'm, I will at least explore the idea of having the staff contact and find the current mechanisms, and then we can take it from there. Are you okay with that, council member?
Yeah, and Mr. Moran, real quick, that popped in my head, too, but there is one difference. That training was specifically designed for us on the public side of this, working for the agency. I think what Mr. Wallace is intending is for something that's more catered to the public on where they could go, and you know what I mean? And so, for that reason, I feel like, I feel like it could be helpful, and also to, to make sure that we're exploring what existing mechanisms are in place. Thank you.
And I'm just going to share a fun, well, I don't think it's fun fact, but just a fact, without stating when was it, or how long ago was it. I do remember a training that we had for council, and, and the topic was related to city form, city manager, council, formal government. And, you know, part of the training was, council is not, is not allowed to do this, like, like, you know, do certain things. That is the responsibility of the city manager. And right at the end of that, that training, and I'm sharing this because this was not part of closed session, so, right at the end of that training, some members walk out, walk out directly to the city manager's office, and they start giving direction on what he should, he or she should do. Right after the training, I mean, I mean, literally, just end the meeting, walk out, and walk into the city manager's office at that time. So, I mean, I, you know, it's, it's, and so, to say that, you know, just because we are elected officials, that doesn't happen. It's, 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 it does happen, you know? But anyways, so at this time, at 9:22, I'm going to go out for public comment in regards to this item. Is there any citizen comments on the phone in regards to this item? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, is there any citizen comments in the chamber in regards to this item? Seeing now, closing the public comment at 9:22, bringing it back to the DA's. And so, this is a discussion and potential direction. So, you know, so staff, so what I'm hearing is for staff to come back with some options, and possibly for staff to be able to reach out to the DA's office based on recommendations by the council. See if they, they would be interested in, and available to come to council in, at one of our meetings, and just provide just an overview, not a, or just a report, just on, go ahead, yes.
I would just add, I would, in contacting the DA's office, it might be helpful. They might not be open to just talking about, like, Brown Act training, but if you want to have maybe somebody from the DA's office that does public, what's called public integrity work, that may be something that would encompass the Brown Act issues, but it also deals with, like, election fraud, things like that, so it may be more, more relevant than, and they may be more open to something like that than just talking about the Brown Act and.
Okay. Council, anything else?
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea, because that gets, it rolls everything into one kind of bucket, not isolating just the one. And that might be a better edge to get them out there. And I don't know whether you prefer city staff should be, the city manager contacting the Merced office, or the attorney making the first, I'm not sure what you think, anybody thinks on that.
City manager, cheaper.
City manager, cheaper? No. All right.
All right. And, okay, anything else, council? All right. Thank you. Moving on now to item number 12, discussion and potential direction on establishing a regular update schedule for the community, potentially a newsletter. I'm not sure who wants.
I requested this one as well.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Too much of me today. So, the reason why I wanted to request this item is, there are a lot of people that don't know who we are, what we do, at all. Some of us, the community sees a little bit more than others. Mr. Moran, I'm assuming people know you're the mayor, just because you're the mayor, but they don't necessarily know what the duties encompass of the mayor. I get asked all the time, "What do you guys even do? You have a meeting tonight, what are you guys even going to go do? Like, why are you taking notes? What are you going to talk about?" You know? And so, there's, there's two aspects of this. There's one that is specifically city of Livingston activity that's very public-facing. Could be a newsletter. I'm open to discussing what exactly this would look like, based on staff capacity as well. And then, one suggest, one ask that I'd make of council, which I'd like to start doing, and I'd ask that you guys consider doing it as well, is providing your own bi-weekly or monthly updates on what you've been up to. The reason why I ask that is because I've been very big on coming in on getting updates regularly from staff, bi-weekly updates from Christopher, bi-weekly updates from Mr. Ramirez, which we've been getting since he's been on. It's very helpful to have an idea of kind of some of the background stuff that is going on before items get on the agenda for us to be able to make decisions. And I think it's fair for us to expect us to do that to our bosses, too, even though there's 15,000 of them, and most of them might never care of, of what's going on. I, I do think it's fair for us to have that same expectation of ourselves, that the same updates that we ask from our staff of what they've been up to, we share the community how we've been spending our time. And even though that looks very different, it still is nice to, to put that out there and give them an idea. Specifically for this, for this newsletter, most organizations, nonprofits, businesses that are active in public information, they have their own newsletters. Whether or not people read them is up to them. Again, newsletter doesn't have to be the way we go, but I would like for the community to know they can look somewhere of what's been going on in the city, whether it's plans for street improvement, plans for a well project, a test well just got drilled, all kinds of stuff that's going on. Jack, you know, you're very active on Facebook with your updates, so that may suffice. I know PD's active on Facebook with their updates, so that may suffice. But there's a lot of stuff that gets done in the city, which nobody knows about, which is very important to the functioning of the city, especially on the public work side. It's not as public-facing. I feel like, Monica, I'm sure a lot of the work that you do, very important, not very public-facing. And I think it'd be nice for the residents to get an idea of just how much work goes into doing things that seem, that are seemingly basic, or seemingly unimportant. And it also helps to justify how much time we're spending, you know, doing some of the things that we do, and also, especially for our department-level folks, you know, justifying, yes, it's important to have very high-qualified people who are getting paid good money to handle all of these things, because they're essential for the city to function. That's one piece of it. I don't feel like civic education is, is good at all. You know, we come in and out of school not knowing essentially how our political system works, how our government works, where money's being spent. And so, again, there's, there's a huge lack, I feel like, of understanding of, of who we are and what we do. And whether it's a newsletter or something else, I would like for us to, to be able to have a place where the community can go to see what the city's been up to regularly. If staff are comfortable with it, highlighting you guys as well. You know, we get to, to put suits on and take all kinds of pictures and stuff, but you guys do a lot of cool work behind the scenes, and not everybody knows who you are. And so, again, just looking for a mechanism for us to be more open, and for people to have a better idea of us.
I have a comment on that.
Yes, go ahead.
Not necessarily a newsletter, but is there a way of adapting, I'm going to think how, the city manager's weekly report that we get to us, sanitizing that, so it goes out to the citizens? And the one major thing we forgot tonight, I want to compliment the volunteer fire department for their pancake breakfast, and the explorer scouts for being there and all their help. It was a wonderful pancake. And whoever won my tequila, don't get drunk.
On that, on that topic, you know, I, I searched and I kind of looked at what other cities kind of use and what they have. And what I noticed, yes, there are some cities like Livingston that, that still doesn't do any social media. I mean, other than recreation and PD, they, they have their social media to put out notices and things that are happening in the community, registrations for this or that, you know? But, but I think it's important to also, and we have, we do have the website, but, you know, and, and talking to people, to, and just the average resident, is, it's the one thing that they, that they mention the most, like, really, like, 19 out of 20 times, is social media, either Facebook or Instagram. And just to mention a few, you know, Ciro Madera, Fresno, Merced, Turlock, Modesto, they have their official city of so-and-so Facebook and Instagram. And I think, and this also happened with school districts, you know? Being an educator or school sites, they're like, they're always afraid of social media, you know, like, we don't want people there just bashing, blah, blah, blah. It's like, you don't have to. All you have to do is just report out, provide a, a, a report. There's going to be a closure of the street on, on Friday from 9 to 5, or, you know, there's going to be registration for the swimming classes, you know? If it wasn't for that, I mean, it would be very difficult for people to really get to know some of the things that are going on in the recreation department. I mean, everybody knows Jackie, but, I mean, does, can everybody really know what Jackie is doing now? You know, and really, Facebook and, and I'm not sure about Instagram, but I know for sure Facebook, it's, you know, the recreation web, Facebook page is really a big avenue of really updating. I mean, it's not, probably not the only avenue, but it's, it's, it's a good, that's what the few people that I talked to is, they always mention, number one, Facebook, number two, Instagram. And, you know, the city doesn't, does not necessarily have to be interacting or back and forward and responding to everything is, you know, even if, if, if the decision is, just post the announcement, that's it. You don't, you know, we don't have to be, you know, having to, because it's impossible to respond to everything. Just provide the essential, the update, and then, and then this way, even, even if it's updates via social media, probably it's, it's not necessarily having to spend many hours in providing, like, a full newsletter, you know? Because it's really updated, you know? Even if the city makes a posting in the morning and in the afternoon, just whatever's happened in that day that needs to be out, you know? And that's it, really. I mean, but we just need to figure out, you know, I know that Mr. Ramirez is very, he is very into social media. I'm just joking. You know, but, but, you know, it's, it's, I think recreation and PD are great examples. And I always, I always see the reports for public works on everything that they're doing, you know? I mean, they're always out of the parks, out on the streets, repairing a lot of different things. And also, it's also a good tool to, not necessarily to educate, but to inform people, or what are some of the updates, some of the things that are going on around the city. Anything else? At this time, I think I, no, I already went out for public comment? Not yet? All right, so I'm going to go out for public comment on this item at 9:33. Is there any public comment on the phone? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, any public, any comment in the chamber? Can you please come forward and state your name for the record?
My name is Soli. Jackie Benoit, 1416 C Street. We've worked really hard on the website, and it really could be an excellent tool. And something that I was thinking about is, rather than spending time trying to reinvent something else to get the word out, is let's do education and work hand-in-hand with Facebook. For instance, Jose, that, what I hear them saying is that the report that you put out, we could have a spot on the website, then you can use us and PD to just put the link on there, and it'll show like a little picture, and just start getting people trained into using the website. Because really, there's, the municipal code is on there, you know? It tells what all of our, how that people can get on the different committees. It tells, actually, I think, things that you guys are supposed to be doing, or your job descriptions, or whatever. So, if we can just do a campaign, maybe, to train people to go to the sources that are already there, I mean, I think that it would be a real eye-opener, because there is an element, we have tried all kinds of stuff. And even when we put stuff in the water bill, I mean, it's basically a courtesy, but nine times out of 10, when they come in to pay, their, their paperwork is still in there, and they just want it thrown in the trash. So, they're not utilizing it. But if we, like I said, anyway, that's just my two cents, but I got a little scared when you said newsletter, because I'm thinking, who's going to have to do that? So.
Thank you for volunteering.
Don't.
No, no, I'm just kidding. To me, I agree with Jackie. We do have a website, putting some links. What I've had is, and I'm sure each, every one of us knows this, it happens to them, a lot of times, citizens will catch us at a supermarket or somewhere, or the park, next thing you know, we're there talking to them about it. So, people that are interested do find a way to get the information, you know, they do. And I have no doubt, Congressman Rupel, that you've been stopped many times on your daily travels somewhere, "Hey, what's going on?" So, people do that, but, like I said, everything, like Jackie's, all of our codes, everything's happening, is on the website, our duties are on there, and even our agenda, it is very clear about what's coming up, what's happened, it's all there. And maybe you just need to, whatever you think, you know, get people used to go into the city website. You know, they have our phone numbers on there, so if somebody needs information, they can always call us. They have our phone numbers listed on the website. So, you know, it is theirs, but.
And your best is pictures.
And our pictures. And our pictures. You know, it, it is there. And so, it's just, and, and I've had people, you know, and I'm, maybe I'm not a good set, but I can't remember the last time I opened my utility bill. You know, I just go online, I know it's due, I just click pay, and I'm done, you know? So, a lot of people, I don't know the records, but there are a lot of people on autopay. They don't even care about opening their water bill or utility bill. They just said, "It's already paid, I don't care," you know? I mean, sending people out letters with all the information never worked either in the past. It has never. Thank you.
Mr. Moran, may I comment?
Yes, go ahead. Jackie, thank you for your honesty and your feedback. I do agree with the mayor that eventually, I think we're going to have to get a city, an official city account, generic to the city, on some of the social media apps. It doesn't have to be now. I think it would be a really cool project for a high school intern. I think it would be a great project for a high school intern, and I will, I will explore that on my own before bringing it back. I'll reach out to my contacts there, see if it could be in some sort of internship experience for them, and they're willing to do most of the brunt work for us. I mean, phones are easy for them. I think it would be something cool to consider, but for now, I'm okay with working with what we have until we get to that point.
And so, I will, I still have the public comment open. Is there any additional public comment in the chamber? That's okay. Seeing now, I'm closing the public comment at 9:39. You know, I, I mean, just.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we going to go back to our comments? I need to go, I'm not doing well now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, we have PD here that can do CPR in case. Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, finding ways to improve communication out to the residents, it's a challenge that everybody is, I mean, schools, school districts, and, but I think it's just having options, it's, it will be helpful. All right, anything else on this item?
Yeah, just one quick thing, Jackie. You do a great job. I do not follow the Parks and Recs website, because there's three or four other city websites. Everything that gets posted shows up on one of them, and then gets reposted and reposted. So you see it three or four times, and it finally sinks into me what's going on. But they're, they're good. I mean, so, the word is getting out there. I mean, because I see so many posts, Betty Cota, and some of these people always have a post out there. Everything Parks and Rec gets posted to, what, 95334, I believe. It's always there. So, the information is getting out, it just, is it getting back? That would be the only thing I'm not sure of, so we still got some work there. And our own website, if Councilman Rupel can get something like that working, because then, once something is posted on it, it's gonna go to all the others. So, sooner or later, probably 12,000 of the citizens, if they're over 15, 12,000 of them are gonna have an iPhone or a Mac or something, they're gonna read it and see it. So I think we can get that out there and be a good, good thing to look into.
Is there enough direction? I just got it. Perfect. All right. So now, we're gonna go back to announcements and reports. Any city staff announcements or reports? Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick one, Mayor. Recently, letters have been going out to cities throughout California from the Transportation Department, informing them to remove any references to diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in your city policies, procedures, your website. If not, according to the correspondence, it could affect your federal transportation funding, if any, that's received by the city. So, I would just point that out and be aware that that may be coming to the city soon.
So that, does that mean that all the guidelines and the title, the different titles that Caltrans has us follow, we have to, so we might be dinged on the state side if we don't follow the fed side?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's putting cities and counties in a untenable situation, because you have dueling requirements. It's unclear what they're, what they're going to do, but the letters are, are starting to go out. We've had, our firm has had multiple cities that we represent, and a couple counties receive the letters from the Department of Transportation.
One of my workplaces, employee emails are starting to get banned for words that are included, that are now considered no-no's or bad words. I'm actually surprised that we haven't heard about anything till now. I was surprised that it took this long to get to us, but thank you for bringing that up.
All right. Any other city announce, city staff announcements or reports?
A lot of the things I'm gonna report, you could find on our social media page, so. I just wanted to make sure, I had had a request about an update on the Recplex, and we are in the middle of putting something together so that we can have, we can better report to you sometime in June. We are working now with the grant writers, we have the architect, and the project manager. We're actually gonna be meeting in the morning and to start laying out a plan on where we go from here. So, I'd rather have information to give you rather than just get up here and sing a song. So, I do need you guys' help in getting the word out. We have not received any scholarships on the Eva Yovara Memorial, which I'm really surprised about. It is open to Livingston residents and people that have had three or four-plus years involved in the Recreation Department. So it is on the website, they can get hard copies here, and so we really, we would like to be able to give the scholarship out to a qualified recipient. I also have had a resignation of one of our Rec commissioners, and so we'll be bringing it, it is Kristi Pineda, and she wound up getting a job that works the same time that our meetings are held, so unfortunately, but she is willing to come back and volunteer. So we, I have heard of a few people that are looking to turn in their applications, so hopefully in the real near future, we'll be able to turn something in to you guys. I will be on an Explorer Detail the next, from Thursday, and I'll be back to work on Monday. I'll have the kids up in Laguna Seca while you guys are warm, I'll be wearing a sweatshirt, I'm so happy. And so, Color Runs Right Around the Corner, online registration's working, running really well. Swim team assessments are Saturday, and we do need flag football coaches. So if any of you guys are willing to coach a flag football team, please see me. And with that...
Thank you.
Jackie, don't run away. You can cover your forehead, I don't know your name. Is that scholarship, and you and I talked about it before, is it strictly when they made the scholarship that they have to be on the Parks and Rec Committee?
Not on the committee.
Or not let involved in it for four years?
The recipient, part of their qualification is that they've been involved in recreation, because it is the Recreation Commission that has fundraised to, we want people that have a vision for recreation, that are pursuing recreational type.
Could the four years be, is it, does it have to be that four years, three, four, can it be like a two years? Would you get some people from Parks, some of the people that work with you to apply? If it was a two-year requirement on the helping you?
Well, the thing is, is if they've grown up in our programs, they probably spent 15 years in our programs. I mean, it's not, it, the four years constitutes playing baseball once a year for four years. I mean, it's not like they're devoted for four years.
Do they all know that, that, that baseball, football, soccer applies to that four years?
And it does state it in the...
Because I didn't know that. That's why I was like, wait a minute, do you think that there'd be a lot of people?
Yeah. And I think, I don't know, again, has the word, how good has the word gotten out? And I did, I actually, I had text the principal, and he put it out to all the seniors, and we had a few people coming in to get applications that day. So, the deadline's the 15th, so they may be waiting until the 14th at the midnight hour, you know, so, but we just, the more it gets out there...
The better.
The better.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. So once again, this could be for anybody that has participated in recreation sports, has volunteered at the festivals or any other activities, and just, just involve in anything with the Recreation Department. Thank you, Jackie. Any other city staff announcements or reports? All right, next we have city manager announcements or reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. A few items. One, we sent out the RFP for CDBG, and you might have saw that mentioned when engineering made your presentation. We're gonna, there might be a little deviation in competitiveness aspect, you know, Jackie talked about the Recplex. We can use funds, CDBG funds, for recreational purposes, so it's a, it's a decision that the council's gonna have to make if we prioritize infrastructure or, you know, leisure activities, but either or, because, you know, money is kind of hard to obtain these days, especially given some of the comments that were made by our city attorney. And, but we're looking at, you know, researching different grants, looking at, you know, talking to foundations, looking at in-kind opportunities as well. And that's not just for the Recplex, that's, you know, you know, if we have some soccer fields, or if we incorporate some baseball, softball, whatever it is, we're looking at all those angles. And, and then, there's also an RFP that's, that's gone out for the water, wastewater and solid waste consultant for, you know, that next go-around. And then, we started labor negotiations, and right now, we're actually working on, you know, putting the cost to some of the requests, and we'll be coming before council soon on something like that. And then, lastly, we're, had a few meetings with the, the school district on other items, but we're gonna, you know, circle back to specifically talk to them about self-help and the, the property, especially because if we can get that, it's, if we, if we accept any money, we're talking about today's dollars, and the longer that the projects take to actually put them on the ground, means that we might not have enough money, you know, on what we collected from any of these developments. So, it's better if, if they do the work, and they do it now, then just get it over with, so we'll come back to council.
Thank you. Next, we have city council members announcements and reports. Mr. Wallace?
Already did, I'm gonna snub your name early.
All right, thank you. Mr. Uppal?
Been at, I'm not gonna name every event I've been in the last two weeks, because we'll be here for 10 minutes. Been at a number of events the last two weeks, I wanna thank all our partners. I do wanna shout a couple folks out specifically, though. State Senator Ana Caballero's office, their district director and some of their staff, I was able to meet with them. Very helpful information from their end, got some information about scholarships for our students, and sent that out to a bunch of partners at the high school. So that was really nice, and Jackie, I will make sure to get word out about that rec scholarship as well. Next week, very fortunate to be able to go to DC for the One Voice Trip. I'm on the Water Committee, which is great. However, I just saw a news report last night that within the administration's current budget, they're planning to cut millions for the Water Revolving Fund that funds, the State Water Board Revolving Fund that is putting money into a lot of our projects, and so, not a great sign right off the bat, but we'll go talk to the committee and see what that looks like.
Okay, so, I have nothing to report of this time. I will bring more up next time. I've been on vacation, so getting some rest. I got a nice suntan, now that I need it, but anyways, so. Other than that, next we have council direction on future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I have one. I understand that we are close to the end of, end of the fiscal year, and to a certain extent, I don't know what, but it's what I like to see, we're in use-it-or-lose-it season. And if Finance Department, working with City Manager, if we could have a report come back, maybe after the next budget is approved, to see what expenditures look like for these last two to three months, it would be interesting to see. I don't know what that's looked like in the past. Reason why I'm bringing it up is because I have worked at or with public agencies where they use it or lose it, attitude was honestly just gross. That's the only way I'll put it. There's money that was being spent that had no business being spent, but it was literally, if we don't use this, we're not gonna get it back. And so, I'd just like to see the extent at which spending takes place like that in the city, and if that's none, then the report is negligible. But I would like to hear what that looks like from your perspective. Thank you.
All right, council, anything else? Seeing none, we're closing this meeting at 9:55. Good night, everyone.